Hi, I'm Robin Schultz with the Hoover Channel. Don't forget to hit subscribe so you'll always know when we have a new video coming up.
Good evening and welcome to the Vicissimo League of Hoover City Council. Thank you all for your attendance. I'd like to call the order and ask the per chief.
Council President Laida.
Here.
Council President Pazey.
Here.
Councilmember Sweeney.
Here.
Councilmember Driver.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy. Councilmember Middlebrooks.
Here.
Councilmember McClain.
Here.
Per fifth, please note that Mr. Murphy is on his way to interview. He's present as soon as he arrives. With a coral present, we will move forward. I would ask that everyone please stand up for the invitation and remain standing.
Goodbye, your guests. Dear my Mr. Father, which is thanks to the Lord, pray your truth and understanding to our leaders on the decisions before them. Pray our city prosper and blessings be in abundance. And I am your son Jesus Christ. Amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge, ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America and through their public, which is hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have several proclamations and presentations, so we will begin as we typically do. Allow Mayor Ricardo Tompkins to recognize the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that. And we do have a few proclamations, and we would like to call up for Occupational Therapy Month. This is Haley Curry, who is Assistant Professor and of Academics and Field Work Coordinator for UAV. There you are. Okay. And Ronaldo Velas, and Hayden's husband, is Director of Therapy Operations at Encompass Health Rehab in Shelby County. And we have a proclamation for them this evening that we would like to raise. If you stand right in front of the city of Hoover, well, how would we have our city in twenty-three with this proclamation?
Whereas the American Occupational Therapy Association has declared the month of April 2025 to be known as Occupational Therapy Month. And whereas the profession of occupational therapy makes valuable contributions in helping people to live life to its fullest after an illness, injury, or event. And whereas the services of occupational therapy are available to citizens of Hoover, Alabama through hospitals, home health agencies, schools, clinics, and nursing homes. And whereas the health and productivity of our citizens depend on the effective use of healthcare resources, including the important services of occupational therapists and occupational therapy assistants. Now therefore, we grant Beaver Cato Mayor and John B. Laida, City Council President, and on behalf of the residents of the city of Hoover and the Hoover City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Occupational Therapy Month, and encourage our citizens to recognize the achievements and contributions of these valued health professionals.
All righty, and this is another fantastic group to honor and to recognize. This week is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and we appreciate our 911 communicators so much. They have one of the most difficult jobs they could ever have in the city. And we appreciate them, and we want to honor them tonight with this proclamation. So we'd ask our Director Linda Moore to come up, Colin Nelson, Emergency Communications Manager, Michael Knight, Emergency Communications Manager, Kim Jones, Emergency Communications Administrative Assistant Doug Glover, Emergency Communications Cad and System Coordinator, and Jay S., Emergency Communication Supervisor. And with that, welcome. And Mr. Sidney Turk, if you would, please.
Whereas emergencies can occur at any time and require police, fire, emergency medical services. Whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. Whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Hoover Emergency Communications Center. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. Whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio and providing them information and ensuring their safety. Whereas public safety telecommunicators of the Hoover Emergency Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of minors, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, we, Frank B. Cato Mayor and John B. Laida, City Council President, and on behalf of the residents of the city of Hoover and the Hoover City Council, do hereby declare the week of April 13 through 19th of 2025 to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Hoover, and honor the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe.
Thank you very much. And we are approaching the 50th anniversary of the Hoover Service Club, who has meant so much to this city. I remember as a young firefighter, paramedic, Service Club purchasing very valuable lifesaving equipment for our volunteer fire department at the time. Jayden, you were part of that. You know very well what I'm talking about. They will be celebrating their 50th anniversary Thursday, I believe, when we're coming over and having that great celebration. So I would ask the President Deborah Taylor, Rachel Probridge from Bernadette Beavers Forest, Lori Callahan, Elaine Thompson, Heather Pierce, Robert Atkins, Inny Campbell, Suzette Clark Walker, and Debbie Vanderford Rutherford, they will come forward. And each of these ladies hold various positions in the Service Club and have been in it for quite a while, and we're very, very grateful for their service. And for that, I'll ask Mr. Sidney Turk, you would read the proclamation.
Whereas Hoover Service Club, a noble legacy founded 50 years ago on May 1975 in Hoover, Alabama by Laura Mae Pike, her daughter Mary Lou Woolley, and eight visionary women united for the purpose of helping others in the Hoover community. Whereas the charter members include Mrs. Calvich Allen, Mrs. O. E. Braddock, Mrs. Edwin B. Chapman, Mrs. Henry Fox, Mrs. William C. Knobbs, Mrs. William H. Hoover Jr., Mrs. Marion H. Lamar, and Mrs. Frank Baum. Whereas the Hoover Service Club was incorporated as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization on December 5, 2003. Whereas Hoover's Service Club's mission is to give aid to the needy, promote increased knowledge of the community needs, and fulfill these needs in various acts of service, grants, and need-based scholarships. Whereas the Hoover Service Club helps countless individuals and families overcome financial, medical, and social challenges through grants and service projects for food assistance, children's and women's needs, health advocacy, and veteran support, including giving over 100 Easter baskets annually for children via food banks. Whereas over five decades, the Hoover Service Club has bestowed over $1 million to the Hoover community through scholarships and community service grants, with 100% of funds raised distributed to the Hoover community. Whereas in May 2025, Hoover Service Club will award over $50,000 in need-based scholarships in honor of 50 years with funds from the annual Hearts and Harmony Gala, McKinnon Family Scholarship, City of Hoover, and Jefferson County Commission Grants. Whereas since 1992, the Laura Mae Pike Hoover Community Service Award has honored exemplary volunteer service to a Hoover citizen, a tribute to the club's founder. Whereas the 2024 Hoover's Magazine voted Hoover Service Club the best local cause by Hoover citizens, a testament to its impact. Whereas today, the Hoover Service Club has over 140 women continuing the legacy of giving to Hoover neighbors in need and committed to continuing this time-honored tradition with compassion, kindness, generosity, and service spirit. Now therefore, we, Frank B. Cato Mayor and John B. Laida, City Council President, and on behalf of the residents of the city of Hoover and the Hoover City Council, do hereby recognize the Hoover Service Club's 50th anniversary in recognition of their contribution, dedication, and service to the Hoover community, and proclaim 2025 the 50th anniversary of the Hoover Service Club, and designate May 2, 2025 as Hoover Service Club Day in reverence for its unwavering dedication.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up, we have this presentation of Mr. Lojardan. He is here on behalf of ATS Cricket Fest. I would ask Mayor Heath to make his way down front two for a presentation.
Good evening, honorable Mayor, council members, and fellow community members. My name is Charles Daniel. I'm the current president of Alabama Town Council for ATS. On behalf of our team and members seated here as well, it is our privilege to stand before you today with gratitude and a vision for our community's future. Last year, our cricket tournament brought together people from across our diverse communities. Today, I'm proud to present this check of $1,500 to our outstanding Hoover Fire Department. This contribution represents just funds, represents not just funds, but our community's appreciation for your tireless service and protection. When we organized last year's tournament, we had two goals: to bring people together through sport and to give back to our city that has given us so much. Today's donation marks an important milestone in achieving both. We'd like to welcome you back, honorable Mayor, council members, and the community here to participate in our upcoming Cricket Festival once again this year.
On the follow-up to that, my name is Balaji Vardhan. I also represent ATS. Along with that, I also represent Central Alabama Cricket, which primarily is the fulcrum of the entire cricket community in Alabama, state of Alabama, where we have leagues with 25 teams, and you'd be surprised to hear that. But on looking ahead, what I would like to share is I'm excited to announce our commitment to support Hoover Parks and Recreation Department next year with the proceeds of the tournament like what we're doing with the Fire Department this year. We believe that investing in our parks means investing in health, happiness, and the unity of our community. Cricket is more than just a game. To many in our community, it teaches discipline, teamwork, and perseverance, values we all would like to install in our youth. Which brings me to a very important vision we'd like to share with you today. We see tremendous potential to expand the youth participation in the game around in the Hoover area. So many families in our community have deep connections to cricket, and we would like for to take this to another level. And what limits us is the limited opportunities to, you know, team and take this global sport to the next level. So what we are proposing is establishing a youth cricket academy that would provide structured training and development for children between 6 to 18. And this academy would offer positive after-school and weekend activities, promote physical fitness, and create additional recreational opportunities for our youth. Some US colleges are starting to establish cricket as a varsity sport with the College and Cricket League, CCL, aiming to promote it and secure funding and for scholarships and facilities as well. To make this listen a reality, we are seeking cities partnership and allocating some of the batting cage facilities in our existing parks. And this relatively small infrastructure investment would deal significant community benefits for all of us. Expand our recreational activities and have the entire community, just not limited to just the cricket playing or the community. So it will bring all kids from diverse backgrounds to come and participate in the game and learn the game. And who knows, you may come up with one of the national or superstars right from here in Hoover. Right? So our organization is prepared to provide qualified coaches. We're going to have level-certified coaches. We're going to have partnership with academies in Atlanta and major metros to bring some expert coaches here and that knowledge. So it's not like we're just taking this as a very recreational sport, but we want to take it to another very serious level as well. And as we present this check today, we'd like to look forward to continuing our partnership with the city of Hoover, supporting our essential services now and our parks in the future, and working together to create opportunities for our youth. So I'm really looking forward to a longstanding partnership. And I always ask one question, right? We are in a comfortable zone today, but I always like to question or challenge the status quo. What I challenge myself is to take this to the youth and promote. And I see immense potential and drive to do this, and a lot of kids are very interested. So I'm really looking forward to a next level of taking this sport and making it one of the most popular, and make Hoover as the hub of cricket in the state of our town. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call Mr. Greg Knight to introduce our next presenter.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, we have Mr. Keith Owens with Alumni Properties with us to discuss. Mr. Murphy and I have had several discussions with him over the past two or three months now. And so Mr. Owens is going to come forward and present on his project. It's a big box project at the corner of Valleydale Road and Inverness Center Drive.
Good evening, everybody. Appreciate the time to be here tonight on behalf of Alumni Properties, our project on Valleydale Road, along with our partners Gary Parks, who's here with me tonight, Scott Skipper from Skipper Engineering is here, Skipper Consulting is here tonight as well. We've been working on this project, I think, as everybody's heard in Hoover for the better half of three years now. We started on this project in 2022. Got to meet, had my first meetings with some staff and the mayor in early 2022, and we began working on the final approvals and the additional approvals, not final approvals, but the additional approvals over the last 18 to 20 months. And me having my meetings with Greg, his team, and then getting introduced to Derek, Mr. Murphy, he suggested it would be a good idea from a transparency standpoint to get through and show everybody all the changes that have happened over the course of these approvals and some of the input we've got from some of the entities that are outside the city of Hoover and how we've implemented those inside the project. So if we can go to the next slide, so. So as I mentioned, my name is Keith Owens. I'm the managing partner for Alumni Properties. Gary Parks is the lead partner. He's also our contractor for the project, the selected contractor for site and vertical work that we'll be doing. We are doing several projects in the southeast together, Tennessee and Alabama, potentially going to expand it to the Florida Panhandle and do some additional work down there. But we have worked together in the past. If you plan on going to the Orange Beach area, then to the Wharf, then do a concert at the amphitheater at the Wharf. Their team and our team built that in 87 days. They were a contractor for us that came highly recommended by several folks in the industry, the music industry and entertainment industry. And they have been really known to deliver on tight budgets, tight timeframes, and really deliver high-quality projects. So they are a preferred contractor for several retailers. They are also a preferred contractor for several theaters that have been built in the United States. So. Williams Blackstock is our architect. They're not here tonight. However, I believe they've done several jobs in the city of Hoover. Y'all are familiar with Joel's company. They're based here in Birmingham. Skipper Consultants, as I mentioned earlier before. Daryl is not here, but of course Scott is here in case anybody on council will have any questions related to the traffic study that we have completed. Environmental was done by Spectrum and Retail Systems, as everybody has heard. They've got signs on property right now. They are our lead leasing team for the company. And this project was headed up from an engineering standpoint for the guys with Scholl. I credit the city staff for working with their team on several of the submissions that we had for the site plan approval. Scholl has done a very fantastic job for us on this. This is our first job with them, and we've been very impressed. So. So this is the project. It's essentially 200,000 plus or minus square feet, mixed-used retail, have small shops, big box, restaurants, cafes, boutiques, and it's going to have roughly 20 to 25 new businesses in the city of Hoover. It's going to generate new sales. The plan is that we're not relocating anybody. These are going to be new businesses to the city of Hoover. We're not poaching anybody from neighboring centers in the plaza or the corners. They're going to be brand-new to the city and hopefully be driving quite a bit of new revenue to that area of the project. Potential tenants include our membership grocery concept, shoes, Colita Carol books, books with a cafe, and some additional new market space that we'll be announcing in the coming months. So. Does everybody know this is the project? This is the corner. I walked in tonight with an old accomplice of mine, and we've worked together on several of these projects. That used to be the Bruno's Store Number Four in Bruno's and Food World Number 48 when I worked at Bruno's for 10, 15 years ago. Jean Carey, sitting on the front row right there, who owns Southern Store Fisher, sold several products to me when I was in that area of the business with him. But this is our proposed site. Of course, it's right across the street from Coles. That was the former Kmart, Lynn Dixie, which was the former Bruno's, and the PJ Tour Superstore, which was the former Food World. This is our previous site plan. This is what was shown at the public meetings that we had with several of the neighborhoods, the last comment plan that we had where we had the gas on the parcel. We had full access on Inverness Center Drive and one singular connection on the Inverness Plaza property, which is adjacent to us where the PJ Tour Superstore is. So these are the major changes that we've made since that plan. Truck traffic. The mayor reached out to us fall of 2023 and had a potential change in the access on Inverness Center Drive. We were able to get together with Shelby County, the city of Hoover staff, our team, Skipper, I think the tenant representative was there, the mayor was there, I believe several staff members were there. And we revised the truck traffic plan. A lot of the comments we got from the neighborhood, adjacent neighborhoods, and some of the one-on-one meetings I had were related to the truck traffic and the amount of traffic that would be essentially dumping on Inverness Center Drive. And the goal was to try to figure out a way to skirt some of that traffic. So you'll see on some of the upcoming slides that we revised the plan, revised that area. Customer traffic changed on Inverness Center Drive. We revised the exiting. We revised the incoming traffic and exiting traffic at that corner. We removed the fuel facility. We removed the liquor store. We added additional connections to Inverness Plaza. We added additional landscaping buffers, and we also updated the building elevations. Now, all of these points that are on here came through various meetings from the county, the city, the neighborhood meetings we had, and also the one-on-one meetings that we had. This is the new plan. This is currently our site plan approval through the city of Hoover. We went through roughly four submissions to the city, got comments back each time, had comments related to landscaping access, traffic flows, turn lanes, neighboring property buffers, what we can do to approve the plan. As you can see, and I hope this, I don't know if a laser pointer works on this. No, it does not. Can you point to the back right there behind where the curve is behind the shops, over, go to the left, over the left? Left. Right there. That was a prime focus in our meeting we had in October with mayor and staff, was eliminating truck traffic from exiting directly on Inverness Center Drive. Trucks will turn around now and come in the main entrance or come out the area over at Inverness Plaza, which will be on the next slide. I'll show in a minute. But another thing we changed was the Inverness Center Drive entrance and exit. It changed from a full access to a right-in, right-out, left-in. So you cannot go left out there. And then we made some additional changes on Valleydale Road and the entrance point there. Next slide. This is the customer access changes that we were just talking about. So essentially, it was originally a full access, left-in, left-out, right-in, right-out. We changed it to a left-in only, right-in, right-out, and reduced the radius so truck traffic could not enter. One of the biggest challenges, as I said, from the neighborhood groups was keeping truck traffic off of Inverness Center Drive. And even though there are still trucks on Inverness Center Drive today servicing a few of the businesses along that way, our goal was to try to alleviate any from our shopping center, at least from the main big center and the big anchors from exiting out of that road directly. So, next slide. This is a blow-up of that exit right there, just to show everybody at least the comments we got directly from the city. You'll notice that there's a no-truck access signage going in both directions on Inverness Center Drive. The radius and the turn-in is for vehicular traffic only. The exit is the same way. And we also did a raised concrete island that will prohibit the left out. So I know that sometimes when you do it in striping, people don't pay attention to it. They drive right over the top of it. This is designed so that you can only go left in and right in, right out. But the big part here was, these are comments that came directly from the city, and then we got with the county, and they also agreed on this traffic plan as it relates to the truck access off the back and the customer access on Inverness Center Drive. This is the truck access that I've hit on a couple times, but just to give a blow-up of it, of course, it shows, you know, we originally had direct access out on Inverness Center Drive, and we've changed it to what they call a truck turnaround radius. And we've also added some additional screening on Inverness Center Drive. That'll be shown on the landscaping plan and the landscape each slide that I'll show here in just a minute. Go to the next slide. This is the truck traffic plan for the main anchor and for the other anchors, A, B, C, and D, which are the larger boxes over on the right side of the plan. They will come in through Inverness Plaza, which will be widened. That service drive will be widened and improved. And they'll come directly off 280, and we'll show that on the future slide. And they can also come in off of Valleydale Road directly onto our main drive coming into the center. And you'll see above the red arrows, they go around the large anchor store that we've got, do the turnaround, come right back out on Valleydale Road, or they can turn and go right behind the anchors and come back out to 280, hit the light. And they can't go left when they hit that light, but they can go right and continue to go down 280 to their next stop. Originally, we had trucks going in and out, coming in both sides, coming off Inverness Center Drive. Again, this was a comment that came from the neighborhood group, and it was some one-on-one conversations I had with several of the residents as follow-ups. This was a critical aspect of the change in the plan. The tenant has agreed to this. As I said, we've got with city staff and the county on it. Everybody's agreed to it. The Aldott has agreed to it. Traffic study that we've submitted has this configuration in it and the movements on it for this. So, next slide. This is the customer access change we made on Valleydale Road. Originally, we had a merging lane coming in where it was the dump lane coming, going west, and the people turning in on Valleydale Road going east would dump into a single lane and funnel into the shopping center. We had two lanes coming out. I had a one-on-one meeting with one of the residents that live on that side of town, Mr. Ricky Brooks, and he asked if we could figure out a way to widen it there, add additional lanes out. He was also an integral informer of some of the issues that were on Inverness Center Drive. Drive. But this change essentially came from that meeting with him. We widened it to essentially three lanes exiting where you've got a dump lane going out and going back west. You've got a single lane that goes across and goes over to the Kohl's Shopping Center, and then you've got the left that goes out and goes, takes you back to two eighty. He also asked us if we would look at, you know, essentially making two dedicated lanes coming in where the dump lane, when you're going west, continues in, and you have a right-only in, and then a single turn lane coming in with a straight, which you can take it and go in and go to the left. And we believe that those changes have greatly improved the traffic flow coming through the main entrance there and will help alleviate any traffic or some of the traffic that will be going over to Inverness Center Drive. So, next slide. This is a blow-up of that area. This is a change that came through late fall, I would probably write around holidays, where the, I believe it was Mr. Reeves and it may have been John Anthony Lake that came up with this, but essentially what we're doing is shifting the left lane that's going into Kohl's Center and the left lane that's going into our center farther over to, we have better visibility. And this emulates exactly what has done, city has done at Inverness Center Drive and Valleydale Road, so it's going to look almost identical. Again, there'll be a brand-new traffic signal at this entrance coming in. This is another comment that came realistically from all the neighborhood groups when we met with them was of trying to shove traffic and not force it, but get the flow to go more towards the two eighty area on Valleydale Road. Our first plan did not have two connections. We had the one rear connection for deliveries only. And in one of my meetings with Mr. Brooks, he pointed out that he would love to see us get a connection at the Inverness Plaza because he felt we could take advantage of their life that's out there by the Alabama outdoors. And we met with the landowners. We've gotten an easement across permanent easements, agreed with Inverness Plaza folks to have both of these access points, and we believe a good part of our traffic will utilize that signal as well. So it's kind of, like I said, it's continuing to get traffic off of Inverness Center Drive to Valleydale Road and over towards Inverness Plaza. So, next slide. This is, the yellow arrows represent the ways you can get into the property. As you'll note, where the two eighty symbol is, it's the right-in, right-out that we have for truck traffic and vehicular traffic for customers. It'll go behind shops, anchors B, C, and D, and the shops over there on the left side, and you'll be able to access the main drive coming into the shopping center. You also have the existing light that's out in front of the CBS and Alabama doors. You've also got the right-in, right-out that's directed there on two eighty, which is the main entrance into Inverness Plaza. And then you've got our main entrance where the new traffic signal is, and then the existing entrance and light that is on Inverness Center Drive, which is again, the right-in, right-out, left-in only. So lots of ways to get into the property, lots of ways to help traffic get out of the property. This is a recommendation that was put on the traffic report, traffic study by Skipper. And I'm not going to speak out of turn here, but Scott told us that this was a recommendation that was on when they did the U-turns. This was a recommendation that's been on a couple of times, and ALDOT has resisted in doing the change for whatever reason. However, in our traffic study, it was something that we implemented. They approved it. We do have a permit for this work. Essentially, it's the island that's out there right on Valleydale Road and two eighty. It's going to become two dump lanes coming to the, when you're turning and going west. So when the U-turns go, yeah, the California U-turn, is that what you call it? We call it U-turns? I know what people, I know what other people call it, but the indirect U-turns, you've got two lanes that do the U-turn, and then they dump into one, and there's a lot of weaving. And I've taken that myself, and at times it's, it can be, it can be quite congestive when you're hitting the gas, trying to get in front of somebody or trying to get around folks. This will help alleviate some of that, having the two-turn lanes going on the Valleydale Road. I think it's a pretty good change, and we think that it'll help traffic flow getting onto Valleydale from two eighty. So this is our previous landscape and buffer plan. It met code. It meant the minimum requirements for certain areas, and it met some maximum areas for other areas. We put buffers along the back, the large anchor A building, and some additional screening on Inverness Center Drive. But we did not put any center islands inside the parking lot, and we kind of limited the amount of screen that we had on Valleydale Road. And this made it to city staff, and we got comments back. Of course, we got some additional comments from the neighborhood meetings we were at too. But we felt like this was a sufficient enough plan to get the plannings the way we had to per the Inverness Code and the Inverness PUD. And once we submitted it to the city staff and planning, they had some additional ideas on how they could help us with some screening. And believe it or not, staff had some pretty good ideas on just selecting the plants, whether it was plants that drop trees or ones that were going to be limbed up, ones that were better for screening. Rip and his team got together with our guys in the landscape team and came up with the next plan. As you can see, it's much more denser. There's a lot more trees, the size of the trees, the screening of the trees. Inverness Center Drive is heavily screened. You'll see a lot of plannings along the, they're mature plannings that have been selected. We also added some additional plannings along the back by the ice storage building and property. That was a property that, once we start doing our grading, we're not, that building is going to be more exposed. So we added some more trees and some additional plannings along that area on both sides of the loading deck in the area right there behind Danbury. The Danbury buffer is one of the most mature areas that you'll see planted when we first start construction. There'll be some additional fencing put in as needed to help screen in the areas that need to be done in the future. And I imagine we'll be out there doing our best Bob Ross imitation and putting trees on the plant wherever we think they need to be. So I do think that from a, from a landscaping plan, from our first plan of this plan, this is a much better plan, and we do appreciate the city's input on this. Next one. This is just a side-by-side comparison we did to show you our original plan and the plan that we did with this, based on city comments. As you can see, all the trees that are inside the parking lot that were added, two, two trees per island, all the plannings along Valleydale Road, screenings for the buildings, additional screenings at Danbury. And I think the, the big change that we like to see is just the screenings up at the corners of the main entrance to the shopping center. It's going to look, it's going to look really good. So, next slide. This is the right side of the property. We call that the village. Most of the time, I hear us refer to that. Again, just more density, better selective trees, just a better overall plan. Next slide. These are just some of the changes, just listing out everything I've been talking about. I think one of the big things that came out of our concept and some of the comments we got from the city is the city actually met with some of the Danbury HOA folks, got their input on the buffer on the rear of the building. We've had some, like I said, additional screening and fencing that'll be added. And then one of the other things that came out was making sure that every area where we had a planted tree, there was irrigated. So we meet the Inverness PUD requirements, the city requirements for this, and we go above and beyond on the new landscaping plan. Next slide, please. Here are our building elevations. Go to the next one. This is our prime anchor, anchor A. This came from comments from, realistically from staff. I believe the mayor gave a few comments on this as well to me on the initial run of this project. One of the things that he expressed and was to have a lot of brick on the building, and one of the things that Councilman Murphy pointed out to me is we've got brick in the rear elevation that you can see that backs up to Danbury. That's also going to have trees there, screens. We'll put all this brick on the back of the building. It's going to look really good, but I don't think you're really going to see much of it from Danbury. Along with Inverness Center Drive, the left side elevation, there's going to be brick facing the Beaumont subdivision. You're going to see, again, a lot of trees on the side of that building over there, so you're probably not going to see a lot of that brick, but the brick will be there. This is tenant-approved, this is city-approved, and it's been as part of the tenant's package to the city for their building permit. So, next slide. These are just some of the additional anchor spaces we're going to have. We got a little note under there, and I want to make a note while I'm standing here, that's preliminary schematic. It's going to be coordinated with the final tenant selected. Some of them have specific light fixtures they use. They've got additional, you know, brick lads and things that we'll put on the building. But for the most part, that's what this is going to look like. You'll have three, three-some buildings very similar to this layout. So these are some shop drawings that we've got put together. These are approved, these were submitted as part of our package. As you can see, we stayed with the red brick color that is in the Inverness Corners Shopping Center across the street, tried to match that brick as close as we possibly could. And we took inspiration from the J. Wright Building, which is in the Beaumont subdivision that's currently built with the gable roofs. You'll see that really on the next slide when we pick that building up. That building there definitely inflicts that building. We feel like the architecture for the shops and for the anchors is going to fit well in the Inverness subdivision. It's also going to fit well in the rest of the retail that's on that side of town. So this is one thing that was not in any of our public meetings. It actually was something that was required for our city's submittal. This is the sign that will be at Valleydale Road in the median in the main entrance. It'll have our signature signs for all of our anchor buildings. And then we've got one available space on the bottom. That'll probably be for our full sit-down restaurant tenant that we plan to put in the shopping center. So, next slide. Last slide we got to go over is the completed project approvals. We've got site plan approval from the city of Hoover. The traffic study was submitted and reviewed by staff. The traffic stand, plan was approved by the city of Hoover and Shelby County staff. That was, again, part of our October meeting that we had that the mayor held chair with staff. Customer traffic plan was approved by the city of Hoover, Shelby County staffs, and I haven't mentioned him, but Chris Reeves was a very big help in that meeting to helping us understand some of the conflicts that we had and helping us get this plan approved as something that Shelby County and the city could agree on. One of the things I learned in the last work session I was at, Mr. Reeves has a pretty good relationship with the guys in Shelby County, and he was able to work through some of their pickups and some of their concerns, along with some of the mayor's concerns and our staff and city staff's concerns, to get a plan to work for everybody. So Shelby County has approved the Valleydale Road improvements. They've approved the traffic study. They approved it in January of twenty-four. They've also dedicated the right-of-way for the turn lane. We've got that proposal completely assigned and executed. They modified the Valleydale median for the new left turns, which I went over earlier, the change that came through city. And then one of the things that came up, and I'm a little concerned about it just from a aesthetic standpoint, the, the plantings that are in the median on Valleydale Road, I think if you've been out there, at times if a car's coming by and you're pulling out of the Kohl's lot, and it's, it's dicey. David would like, the county engineer like that, removed all the plannings in the, in the median completely removed and it concrete. It won't look as good as what's out there today from a, from a planning standpoint, but from a safety standpoint, he believes tearing that out. So there may be something we do where it's kind of a happy medium when we tear out parts of it and leave some of it, but the big question of why he wants it out is maintenance. He doesn't know who's going to maintain it. But that is one thing that I think is just an open item that we've all got to figure out what we're going to do. IDCC, which is the Inverness Design Control Committee, while it wasn't a required approval, we went ahead and got Inverness Design Control Committee to take a look at everything. They approved the site plan, they approved the access, they've approved the landscape, they've looked at the building elevations and signage. We've got an approval from them in a letter that says everything that we've submitted is approved. So ALDOT, as I mentioned earlier, approved the changes on the two eighty permit, which was the two eighty island work that we're doing. We've got our A-DAM permit in hand, erosion control ready to go, and we've got our building permit for the prime anchor in the city of Hoover. We have to submit a erosion control bond for construction. It's a hundred thousand dollars that protects Lake Heather in the event of any erosion sediment during construction. It also will be in place in the event we have any continuing erosion control. I believe it stays on for twelve months after we're open. I'd have to check with Chris to make Mr. Reeves verify that exactly. We're also putting up a landscape bond to make sure that the landscape and plantings lives for a certain period of time. Anything that dies has replaced, is called on part of that bond. Those are two things that we have to put up to pull our final permits. So we have purchased the property. That's one thing that's not ours in approval, but as Mr. Latta spoke in the Business Journal in August, we closed on the property in the middle of August, and we are working through final approvals with some of our tenants and working on final lease items right now at this time. And that concludes my update. Thank you.
Good, thank you, Mr. Owens. Any questions for Mr. Owens at the bottom tonight before we get to our prayer here?
Mr. President, just want to comment, the, thank you, Wendy. She also sent out notification to several neighborhoods in that area so they'll be notified of the presentation.
And as I told you last week, Mr. Latta, we are welcome to state. If anybody has any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Owens has graciously agreed to head into the lobby, so if there's anyone who has questions for him, he is agreed to take those questions.
Nails, everything? Totally fine. Thanks, sir.
If you'd like to head that way, he'll be glad to take your question. We'll now move to our consent agenda. As you can see, the consent agenda includes twenty-three items.
Can we comment to you guys, improving this?
Well, there's nothing before the body tonight. This is just an informational presentation. Once we get a proposal and application from the applicant, if we do, then there will be a public hearing where there will be presentation and a potential vote. No vote will be taken tonight. It was just for informational purposes only.
Thank you, Mr. Latta. I thought I had won the lottery there for a minute.
No, sir.
I don't have it, three minutes. Well, thank you, Council, for the opportunity to come up tonight and give you this annual stormwater report. The last city of Hoover stormwater update was presented to the city council in May of two thousand twenty-four. Tonight, we again thank you for the opportunity to present information on various stormwater-related items the engineering department's been working on throughout the last year. As you know, stormwater is one of the most challenging issues we deal with in the city of Hoover and in the engineering department. These issues are not unique only to the city of Hoover, but to many of the counties and other cities throughout the state. As you can see on the tile sheet, on the right side of that tile sheet, the entire engineering department's involved in their stormwater management program. Stormwater issues affect everything we do, whether it's a construction project, work at our wastewater treatment plants, traffic operations, new developments curbing, as Mr. Owens just said, and planning zoning. There's a lot of information included in this. I know we're crunch for time tonight, so I won't go into a lot of detail on these issues, but if you do have any questions, please forward those to me or my staff, and we will get you an answer as soon as possible. Though during the past year, we have had a few changes to our engineering staff. One of them was our assistant city engineer. The gentleman that was in that position just didn't work out for us, so we had to replace that person. I would like to introduce Ms. Rosemary Yan. She's our new assistant, say hello, Rosemary. She's our new assistant city engineer. Rosemary comes to us from the city of Mobile, where she was serving as their city engineer. She's very talented. She's licensed professional engineer in the state of Alabama. She's a certified floodplain manager, and she is a certified professional in municipal stormwater management. So you can take that and believe that the next report you're going to get, she's going to be doing it. We also welcome Ms. Hillary Hughes. She's replaced the vacant civil engineer position we had when Ms. Adherholdt resigned a few months ago. And we also have Mr. David Largent in the back to stand up David. He's filled the engineering technician position we have. In addition, for many years, we have Mr. Duane Smith, who's here tonight with hydroengineering, that served as our MS four and stormwater consultant. And it's April Daniston and Wallace Jordan provide experts to our team, and their services are really enviable to our, our department in the city of Hoover. This slide is just to give you an indication of how many stormwater requests are caused that we process each year. As you can see, last year in two thousand twenty-four, we processed a hundred and forty-seven calls. That was about fifty percent of the number we received in two thousand twenty-three. And the possibility this was caused by a drought we had in the latter part of last year, I think we had four months where we, we had no rainfall at all. I would like to recognize Mr. Justin Marlin. He's in the back as well. Stand up, Justin. Justin is a civil engineer in our office. He's the main point of contact for us with these requests. He does an outstanding job managing this work and corresponding with residents. This is a very thankless job, and many days he goes home banged and bruised up at the end of the day. So far this year is that show we've had, I think it was 81 calls so far this year. We're on track to keep up with those 2023 numbers. This slide is just to give you an indication of the stormwater fees that we collect. City of Hoover does collect stormwater fees each year to help support the stormwater program, stormwater maintenance activities and projects. These fees are collected from residential and commercial properties located within the city limits for both Jefferson and Shelby Counties. The city pays an annual fee of $10 per residential property and one half of one cent per square foot for commercial properties with a cap of $3,000. The fees collected each year from both counties average right at $600,000. How's that money spent per the 25 budget? It was spent for our stormwater operating projects and for various stormwater projects. This item is, shows you the stormwater operating budgets for 2024 and 25 as approved. We included fiscal year 24 in here because the last update we gave was in May of last year. So for both years, this includes not only our capital projects, our miscellaneous bridge maintenance, our stormwater operating, and our miscellaneous drainage maintenance funds. The total allocated for both years was $2,877,000. Projects for the last year, we have the next three slides will show you 25 projects we've worked on. Majority of these projects are completed. Item number four on this one is in design in the fiscal year 25 budget. We did allocate the engineering funds for this, and we'll present a construction request in the fiscal year 26 budget. And as you see, these projects are all over the city. They range from Greystone, to Quail Run, to Greenville, to Alseer, to Patton Chapel. Stormwater maintenance, it really has no limits. Total of costs spent for these projects during the last year was $1,289,325. In fiscal year 23, the City Council approved funds in an amount of $80,000 for the engineering department to implement a stormwater inventory condition assessment for certain city maintaining stormwater infrastructure located in the Greystone community. This condition assessment included developing a GIS database, locations, conditions, types of pipe, et cetera, for all the city maintaining stormwater infrastructure located in this Zone 1, as it's shown on the drawing. Zone 1 was completed in 2004. As you see on here, it's just an example of the data that we received in GIS map. You can see the pictures of the infrastructure and the ratings are on the side that may be hard to read. But this is very valuable information to our staff as they maintain and evaluate those areas in Greystone. Funds to proceed with Zone 2 inventory was approved over the budget amendment on March 17th. We're looking forward to this. This area is very critical for us. We do have issues that we're continuing to see in this area. So we were really excited about it. Long-term future goals of these assessments is to complete the stormwater inventory assessments for the additional zones, Zones 3 through 7. Prioritize maintenance activities and budgets. Develop a 10-year stormwater capital improvement master plan the City Council and administration to consider. And allow the City of Hoover to become proactive in stormwater maintenance activities versus reactive. This was really for the councils' benefit. This is just a brief history of the NPS permit. You know, it started in, you know, 1972 with some amendments to the Clean Water Act. And this goes down to where we reissued our new permit this past October in 2024. That's just for your information if you need something to read tonight. This one is just an update on our MS4 permit. We spent really two and a half years with our staff, you know, working on getting our permit reissued. We had several meetings with ADM. We had a lot of correspondence, a lot of emails and phone calls with those. So they did reissue our permit on October 28, 2024, and that permit will expire on October 27, 2029. Dealing with ADM on that issue, you know, would make a personal wish they were still the traffic engineer, trust me. The 2024 annual report was submitted to ADM in January of 2025. The stormwater management plan is also being updated to address changes and modifications that ADM included in the new permit. It will be located on our website and the comments that people would like to provide, they're more than welcome to do that. We will submit that updated stormwater management plan to ADM next month. And the last thing I have, last year, we talked about some changes to our erosion settlement control ordinance. We do have that completed. Apologize, we're a little bit late getting that presented to you. We've been limited on our staff a little bit with some changes, but we do have it ready. And Ms. Yan will be presenting that to you. She's taken with her expertise. She's going through it. Make sure she doesn't see anything that she thinks needs to be changed or added. And she anticipates having that ready next month to present that to you. And I apologize, that was pretty fast. But if you do have any questions on that, please let me and my staff know, and we'll ask your looks for you.
Mr. Reeves, I have one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Not to put you on the spot, you don't have to answer or not research it. So is it true that current construction ordinances are based on half-inch rainfall for this last slide? And is that an area that you foresee updating as part of the ordinance?
I'll tell you what, I do have the people here that can answer that question. If you would like me to bring them down?
Sure.
Because I don't want to misrepresent it. So either Dwayne, would you or Ms. Yan like to come down and talk about that issue?
Hello, I'm Dwayne Smith. About the only time I don't wear a coat tie is when Chris calls. To answer your question, ADM's permit references a three-quarter inch rainfall. And we've kind of gone through many different things within the ordinance itself to look at where we have issues and problems. So we're kind of going back through and basing it, but right now we're basing it on the state standards of three-quarters of an inch.
Thank you for that answer. Anything for us? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, now move to our 23 item consent agenda. For those that are accustomed to being with us, you know that consent agenda items are presented and will be read by the attorney and voted on with one motion on both of us, and for someone who would like an item removed. I would first ask the council, if any items, 1 through 23, should be removed for further discussion.
Yes, Mr. President, I think of removing number 14, please.
Number 14, is that the question?
14, yes.
14. 14 has been removed. Any other items on the body? Any member of the public here to speak on items 1 through 23, with the exception of 14? Very good. Mr. Corey, if you'll read the remaining items?
Item number one approves payment of bills. Item two approves the minutes from the March 17th, March 17, 2025 meeting. Item three is resolution 8412-25 approves a 020 retail restaurant liquor alcohol license for Hoover Hospitality Company, LLC. Doing business as Courtyard Marriott Hoover, 1824 Montgomery Highway, Hoover, Alabama. Resolution 841325 approves a 0160 special retail for more than 30 days alcohol license for Park Crest Properties, LLC. Doing business as Park Crest Event Facility located at 297 Warner Road, Hoover, Alabama. Resolution 841425 approves a 050 retail beer off premises only alcohol license and 070 retail table wine off premises only alcohol license for Trader Joe's East Ain't doing business as Trader Joe's 838 located at 1769 Montgomery Highway, Hoover, Alabama. Resolution 841525 approves a 140 special events retail alcohol license for five-star concessions, LLC. Doing business as the 2025 Region's Traditional Gold Tournament located at 4100 Greystone Drive, Hoover, Alabama. Resolution 841625 reappoints the following members to the Commercial Development Authority for the City of Hoover. Christopher Washington is reappointed to place three, which expires March 15, 2029. Scott Underwood is reappointed to place four, which expires March 15, 2029. And Beth Corninga is reappointed to place five, which expires March 15, 2029. Item eight, resolution number 841725 requesting the United States Office of Management and Budget reconsidering correct the change in Metropolitan Statistical Area Designation to reinstitute the Birmingham Hoover Metropolitan Area Designation to properly reflect the integral role that Hoover continues to play in the economic, cultural, and social landscape of the region. Resolution 841825 authorizes the mayor to execute a one-time equipment incentive credit from Verizon Wireless to allow for activation of the government subscriber lines on a fixed wireless access plan to enhance public safety and park security through improvements of cellular service for the cameras in various parks. Resolution 841925 authorizes Mayor Burkato to execute an internship affiliation agreement with the University of South Alabama to allow for an unpaid intern to work with the therapeutics division of the Parks and Rec Department for the purpose of providing the intern with practical experience in the field. Resolution 842025 authorizes the mayor to execute a direct primary care agreement with one live healthcare and one medical group, PC. Resolution 842125 authorizes Mayor Burkato to accept the proposal and execute agreement of training, US and doing business as training for the HVAC modernization project at the Hoover Public Laboratory, including the installation of a train tracer building automation system at a total cost of $476,000. Resolution 8422-25 rejects all bid submitted for the Hoover Recreation Center roof improvement project, bid number 25-002, and authorizes this project to be repped. Item 15 authorizes Mayor Burkato, uh, resolution 840725 authorizes Mayor Burkato to execute a non-reimbursable agreement Level 3 Communications, LLC for project number P-556055 for city project number IND 7112602 for the relocation of aerial facilities. Resolution 840825 authorizes the mayor to accept an Apple grant from the Regional Planning Commission of Greater Birmingham for the purpose of conducting a Warner Road corridor study and authorizes an expenditure of $14,990.12 as the city's 20% share of the total project cost. Resolution 842325 authorizes the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding to Shelby County to revise funding commitments contained in the original memorandum of understanding executed on September 19, 2011. Resolution 842425 authorizes the mayor to execute a temporary construction easement to Shelby County for the purpose of Valleydale Road project. Resolution 842525 authorizes the mayor and the city clerk to execute a permit with the Alabama Department of Transportation for installation, operation, and maintenance of a new traffic signal in Staple 150 at Lake Cyrus Boulevard Everly intersection. Resolution 842625 declares certain personal properties, specifically an X-ray machine purchased in 2016, is not needed for municipal purposes and directs the disposal of the same. Mayor Burkato is hereby authorized to dispose of this personal property through trade-in process to a qualified vendor without financial exchange as part of the procurement of a new X-ray machine. If trade-in option is not available, Mayor Burkato is authorized to dispose of this property by donation, auction, or recycle. Resolution 842725 accepts a grant from the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency in the amount of $67,368 for the purpose of funding the Hoover Police Department dive team and authorizes Mayor Burkato to execute any necessary documents related to this grant acceptance. The resolution also amends the budget for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2025, as shown on exhibit A to the resolution. Resolution 842825 accepts the grant from Alabama Law Enforcement Agency in the amount of $36,500 for expenditures related to the Hoover Police Department camera system and authorizes Mayor Burkato to execute any necessary documents related to this grant acceptance. This resolution also amends the budget for the fiscal year ending September 30 of 2025, as shown on the exhibit A. And finally, item number 23, resolution 8429-25 accepts a grant from Alabama Law Enforcement Agency in the amount of $61,225 for expenditures related to the Hoover Police Department's simulations and accessories and authorizes Mayor Burkato to execute any necessary documents for this grant acceptance and also amends the budget for the fiscal year ending September 30 of 2025, as shown on exhibit A.
Mr. President, I'll move for approval, consent agenda.
Second. A motion, second for approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Nice habit, motion carries. Item number 14, resolution number 8361-25.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Burkato to execute supplemental agreement number one with ADM of the Department of Transportation for the projects related to additional lanes on Valleydale Road from Caldwell Mill Road to Inverness Center Drive, additional lanes on Valleydale Road from Caldwell Mill Road to Meadow Drive Phase 1, and additional lanes on Valleydale Road from Meadow Drive to Inverness Center Drive Phase 2.
Mr. President, I'll move for approval, resolution 8361-25.
Second. Motion, second for approval. Question, comments from the body?
Mr. President, I'd like for the record to reflect that I will abstain from voting on this item.
Very good, Mr. Albert. Any questions or comments from the public? Very well, we have a motion, a second for approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. The ayes have it, it will be mentioned by Councilor Brown. Item 25, resolution number 8, I'm sorry, 24, resolution 8430-25.
This resolution accepts the grant from the Jefferson County Commission in the amount of $75,000 for expenditures related to the improvements at Russet Woods Park Phase 2. Authorizes the mayor to execute any necessary documents related to this grant acceptance. The resolution also amends the budget for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2025, as shown on exhibit A to the resolution.
Mr. President, I'll move for approval, resolution 8430-25.
Second. A motion, second for approval. Question, comments from the body? Any comments from the public tonight? It's 29. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Nice habit, the motion carries. Item number 25, is resolution number 8431-25.
This resolution amends the budget for the fiscal year ending September 30 of 2024, as shown on the attached exhibit A to provide funding for various qualifying capital projects of the city.
So I'm going to move for approval, resolution 8441-25.
Second. A motion, a second for approval. Mayor Burkato, I'll turn the podium over to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the opportunity to speak about really the next three items on the agenda for tonight. We find ourselves kind of at a crossroads facing an infrastructure need and somewhat of a stalled cultural investment. We have an opportunity tonight, though, to take a strategic action that will protect our city's financial integrity and continue to serve the people of Hoover with transparency and accountability. So the proposals you're here tonight outlines how we can address the critical sewer needs, protect the $17 million bond fund, and protect our, protect our long-term vision for the Performing Arts Center without sacrificing one for the other. So just where we stand, the bonds, you know, we borrowed money in 2023, $93 million. $61 million was for the 459 interchange. That's moving along nicely. $15 million for the Hoover Met renovation. Again, that is moving along nicely, and most of that money has been spent. We should be closing that out very soon. And then the last one was $17 million for the Performing Arts Center. The interchange and the met funds, as I said, they are moving along quite nicely. The $17 million for the PAC remains untouched, and we're now down to 12 months before the bond compliance window closes on us. So it's not practical to think that we can actually build a performing arts center in the next 12 months. Just kind of a reminder, the $17 million was borrowed going to, it was going to be a public-private venture. And the original plan was a lease purchase arrangement with the developer of Patton Creek. And the city would lease a building and finish out the interior and ultimately gain ownership of the building. That deal fell apart shortly and right after we, the bonds were issued. And actually, the property was sold, and that's something that was never disclosed to us during our negotiations. That was the model that we chose back then. If we were to take on the entire project, build the building and just, you know, the whole package, lock and key, that would probably be about a $45 million project. So getting back, if we don't spend these funds on eligible uses, the $17 million within the next year, then we face scrutiny by the IRS. And that's, that's not politics. That's tax exempt bond law, and it's IRS compliance. We're being proactive. Our bond lawyers strategically provided a path to preserve these funds by removing that time restriction. And that's very, very important, the time restriction. So no, we're not abandoning the arts. We're protecting our commitment to this project. Some have said that we're starting over, but... Some have said that we're starting over, but that's not true either, we are preserving the opportunity and keeping the door open instead of watching it close. So, to protect the $17 million and keep the PAC dream alive, we are proposing to shift the funding from other eligible and already approved capital projects that come from bond proceeds. This comes directly from our bond council. This makes $17 million available to pay for other projects deemed important by the body without any time restrictions. Again, that is the key right there. We've used $6 million in capital project funding to immediately address critical sewer system needs. We restrict the remaining $11 million to the PAC with a plan to restore the $6 million in the upcoming budget year. Council may also choose to commit more funding as additional funds are available. There's also the reserve fund that we, we can talk about as well that could be applied to that. This is strategic, it's legal, it's recommended by our bond attorney, and preserves the dollars intended for the Performing Arts Center. Now, as been expressed by several of you, and I don't disagree with you, the question's been asked, is it in the city's best interest to remain in the sewer business? We rely on a third-party vendor to run our system and it cannot be scaled, it's not going to grow. It serves less than 15% of our population and many homes and businesses are outside the Hoover City limits and pay no taxes to the city of Hoover. It carries a $17 million bond debt. Engineers had identified an additional $25 million in capital needs, that would include the $6 million. The six, the $6 million that must be addressed now, we're proposing to use that to immediately tackle these urgent needs. This is not a retreat from the arts, it's a responsible choice and a smart investment in our core services. If we don't act, we risk service failures to our customers and legal exposures. So, I want to speak to any of the residents from River Chasing, Inverness, South Lake. I want you to know, you're not the problem, you're not being blamed for anything. You expect your toilets to flush, your sinks to drain, and to be charged a reasonable fee for that service, and I understand that. I've met with the HOA leaders, I've been, I've spoken at different meetings, I've heard your concerns, and I understand the frustration, the uncertainty, and the fear that comes with this type of discussion. The truth is, we've worked hard to maintain this sewer system, our team has done everything possible to extend its useful life, but it was never designed for scale to operate efficiently under city ownership. It serves just a small number of our customers, and again, some of whom don't even live within our city at all. Since the beginning, administrations, all the way back, have really struggled with raising rates, trying to ease the burden on the city and on our, our customers and our citizens. But now, to keep that system functioning just with daily operations, it's estimated that it would, we would have to double, double the, the rate, the charge for sewer system each month. And that still doesn't cover the $25 million needed over the next several years for the major repairs. That's just not sustainable. It's not fair to the users or to the rest of the city. They're being asked to subsidize a system that really serves only a small portion of our population, very important portion of our population, but still, it is a very, very small portion. So, yes, we need to begin serious, transparent conversations about whether the city should remain in the sewer business. If the city explores selling the system, we may make, we need to make sure and ensure that the voices of our citizens are heard and that should we sell it, or anyone that we talk to, that we make sure that they are under the guidance of the Alabama Public Service Commission, which protects rate, protects our ratepayers from unfair increases. So, we, I know this group will not move forward without taking our citizens into consideration and have them walk the walk with us. So, considering the sewer system, if you did sell it, it would eliminate a $17 million debt, possibly avoid an additional $25 million in future capital obligations. Possibility, instead of these funds could be used towards a performing arts center. So, it's time to really seriously consider whether the city should continue operating this system and allow, or allow someone else that's in the sewer business who can apply economies of scale. We simply have no way of growing the sewer business. I know there's been disappointment, disappointment about the PAC, I've read the articles that John wrote today, I've heard the frustrations, I understand them, but I want to say this clearly to everyone, I led the effort, along with this group, to set aside $17 million in the first place. We've been committed to the PAC since day one and I don't see that commitment changed at all. What has changed is the plot. I'm just, I don't think you're willing, I'm not willing to risk losing this opportunity or risking a failure in our sewer system to provide a point or satisfy a head-on. Some have said that we use bond interest money, money to build a fire station instead of growing the PAC fund. That station protects the lives of our citizens in Green Valley and the entire city of Hoover. It's the city's oldest fire station. I'm very, very happy that our council invested in that. Strong cities invest in public safety and they invest in the arts. Yes, we are financially strong. Our reserves have grown from $32 million to $69 million. And you could choose to fund the sewer system out of that, but the current six-month reserve policy limits how much we can access. We cannot afford to run a failing utility without overextending the city. Let's be honest about our limits and about making smart choices. Let's begin the process of evaluating the sewer system with full transparency and our residents input. We want to make sure that we've given you all of the information to make these decisions about the proposals tonight. We work individually with each other, we work with our bond council, we believe that we've got expert opinions on everything that we are trying to do tonight, and we look forward to providing any other information that you need and to working with you and assisting you in any way we can to help you make this very, very wise but difficult decision. So, with that, I'm going to call up Jennifer Cornett and Blake for their presentation and just to give you, again, it will really be talking about the next three items, but Jennifer, if you would, please.
Um, well, like the mayor, I want to thank all of you for making special time to hear in advance about our proposal as it relates to the use of these bonds funds. The overarching goal with the strategy has been to comply with the IRS spending requirements related to tax-free borrowings, while at the same time, funding some critical needs related to the sewer system and preserving as much as possible for a performing arts center. So, as the mayor said, the next three items are linked to one another with items two and three being dependent on this very first item. So, the, the first item that you have before you is a budget amendment, and I won't go through the, the background details that I talked about on Thursday, but everyone remembers, I think, because the mayor just recounted the three different projects that were identified to use those bond proceeds. The issue that we have now is that because the IRS regulations require the issuer to have a reasonable expectation to expend the funds within that 36-month window after the bonds are issued, and now, we're in month 25 of that 36-month window, we, we don't have design plans or a location yet identified for the PAC, and so therefore, it can't be reasonable any longer for us to expect to spend those funds for the PAC out of the bond funds within that IRS required timeframe. So, as a result, with the guidance of the city's bond council, we've been able to formulate what I'll call a proactive strategy that allows us to ship certain qualifying capital projects that have already been approved from our Capital Projects Fund over the past 18 months, and then to allocate those expenditures to the bond proceeds. This plan meets the spending timeline requirements of the bond funds and it permits the flexibility for council to approve other projects out of the Capital Projects Fund that are not subjected to those spending timeline restrictions. So, this resolution approves the budget, would approve, the budget amendment to allow for other qualifying capital projects to be paid from those bond proceeds. The separate agenda items to follow will address requests in the city's capital project fund as it relates to sewer critical needs and the establishment of a performing arts center fund, as well as the application of the FY24 capital expenditures to the bond Do we want to talk about all three items?
Mr. President, I have a presentation as well. Is there a question?
Okay. So, so the next budget amendment request is related to the Capital Projects Fund, related to the sewer needs and the performing arts center.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So, this one is for item 26, and item 26 is really a resolution to address the critical capital wastewater treatment facility improvements. Over the last several years, we've made many repairs to the wastewater treatment facilities to keep them running efficiently and economically. Our city staff and our consultant Clearwater Solutions have identified $6.1 million in capital, critical capital needs to the treatment facilities. If there was a way that we could continue to make these repairs, we would do so. Unfortunately, we're at the point where these critical items have reached the end of their useful lifespan and need to be replaced. Normally, this would come at a mid-year budget amendment or as a fiscal year budget request, but these are the critical nature of these items. And due to some of the items having a long lead time for installation, we'll come to you now for this request. While we fully understand this is a large dollar figure, it should not come as a surprise to anyone in council, these capital expenditures relate to assets owned by the city that must be maintained by the city 24 hours a day, seven days a week. These items are part of a long-term capital expenditure plan for our wastewater treatment facilities that have been presented previously. On Thursday night, Jason Woltz gave a very good breakdown of the specific items. He is available tonight.
So, speaking to that budget amendment piece, with the approval of the first resolution, $17 million would be available in the Capital Projects Fund to be assigned to the two items that we've requested with this resolution. So, $6.1 million to those critical sewer needs and then the remaining $10.9 million to a performing arts center. And while we, we know this is a large dollar ask, at one time, these capital expenditures do relate to an asset owned by the city that must be maintained by the city. These items are part of the long-term capital expenditure plan for the sewer that has been And then the third item, authorization to allocate on the bond proceeds to financial year-end 24 expenditures. So, in order for expenditures to be allocated to bond proceeds, they have to be spent first. Okay, so, so this is a, really a, I would call this a housekeeping item that follows the other two, to formally go back and pull those funds from the bond proceeds that are being held by Regions Bank with that allocation.
Any questions for Ms. Cornett, the body, or?
Yes, Mr. President. Um, I have a problem with the first one, but what I would say is this, if you've got $17 million, you're going to create a project, you're going to create a PAC fund, make the PAC fund $17 million. Yeah. A few years ago, when we had the investment committee meeting, we had a $15 million maturity. So, after you do all this, take some of that $15 million maturity and make it $17 million, your, your PAC fund, leave that over, and then we're keeping our promise to the people that we borrowed the $17 million, I'm going to disagree with you, not, not in total, but I'm saying that we knew it was going to be $45 million, 40 to $45 million. A lot of this was to do legwork, things like design plans, things like purchasing land, we knew we were going to have to go back, that's what I'm saying. So, in three different instances, you mentioned one, but there were two others, we could have needed to pull from that money. For the people that are running next term, that are going to be your next term, you're running, a lot of other people are, I want to make sure that they have that money we told people we're going to borrow, should, let's say, you know, in, in November of next year, somebody come forward and say, I'm ready to do this, that that money is there, the whole $17 million to buy land and to draw plans and do things like that, and then they can go and borrow that again. We're at the end of our nine years here, where we said we were going to do this, and I think we all are committed, whether we're here again or not, that we want to do this moving forward, it's something the city, the city needs, it's something the city deserves. So, what I'm saying is, let's go through with this, let's have an investment committee meeting, let's look at some of our, our maturing investments, and then let's come back next time and let's make it $17 million, so it's moving from $17 to $17.
Can I clarify something?
Sure.
So, so, those investments that we're talking about in the investment committee are investments that fund all of the funds, so if you back up, lending to that one pager that I had, I'm sorry, I'm kind of springing that on you, yeah. So, all of the investments that the city has are, are, are funding each of these different kinds of funds, right? So, so it's not a question of whether the city has the cash flow to be able to do this, it's a question of which one of those buckets are the sewer repairs going to come from, right? And so, if we wanted to put just $17 million in a PAC fund, that would be, you would be, that would be something that council could decide, however, if you're going to address the sewer needs, those would have to come from the general fund, which would make it, which would make our balance lower than what our reserve, current reserve policy is.
But you, but you are doing that, you're just going to your investment fund. The two I'm talking about are ones that we moved a few years ago, there were two $15 million increments that were moved at different times. I'm saying come back and make it whole again.
I'm saying that those investments fund each of those funds, and a maturing investment still means, that gives you cash flow, but it still means the funding has to come from one of those places.
But in no way.
It would have to come out of the general fund.
And move it from the general fund to make this whole.
Yes, you could move it from the general fund to make it whole, yes, you could. And that would make the general fund balance less than the $69 million that's in the current resolution to keep the, the fund balance level.
Or, as you said, you can sell the sewer system and then you can make it whole. There's lots of ways to make it.
That's right, that's right. We could have a, a great excess, right? And, and council could choose to commit some additional funds to the Performing Arts Center. That would, that would be my recommendation. We're getting very close to having our, our books for '24 finished, and I think that would be an appropriate time then to look back at that and, and true up that commitment and to true up the, and to adjust, adjust the reserve policy if that's what council would like to do.
I just think we gotta, we gotta, if we borrowed $17 million, we gotta stay true to our word and keep it $17 million, and we gotta find a way to do that. And, you know, I understand that, that the sewer needs are important, I completely understand what's going on with that and that you can't sell it unless you fix it. But when you start opening up discussions of, there being just $10 million fund out here, what happens is you start getting emails like we got today. Well, what about my project that I want? Well, what about the projects in my neighborhood? What about this project? And it's their money. So, so everything that they're sending us saying, hey, well, what about, what about these sidewalks, what about these things, what about these things, you didn't approve this, what about this? They're right. And then eventually, it's going to be, how do I tell them no, but tell the sewer system yes? And that's something all of us, after answers elected the And that's something all of us have to answer as elected officials. So I just think if you're going to have $17 million for the PAC, as soon as possible, make it $17 million for the PAC, true that up, and do what we're severing under.
Mr. Posey, I think you're saying exactly what we're saying. We want to make this, the fund whole. Only this body can do that. We can't move anything. We can only operate the way you ask us to operate. We can only fund it the way you ask us to fund it. So you're, I completely agree with you. It's just how do you want us to fund it? We'd be glad to do it. And we are fully committed to, I think all of you and myself, we're fully committed to taking that $17 million, however it's made whole, and designating it as a PAC fund, not to be pecked away at from different projects, but to actually be for that fund. So I think we're saying exactly the same thing. We just need the council to tell us, to instruct our CFO how he wants to fund. Got money, we've got, got a lot of money.
I have a question, too. I get the emails like it does, and the voicemails, really good, long voicemails. And I agree with everybody on the panel here that this is a commitment, Hoover's word has to be gold, it has to be made whole, has to keep its word. And I guess my biggest question is, not to play the bling ding, but I get questions out here, as dire as this sewer thing is, how come this was not mentioned six months ago in the budget?
I'd be glad to answer that.
You are very aware, and everybody out there is very aware.
Your mic's up.
Each of you are very aware of the sewer needs, it's something that we have talked about multiple times. You get a weekly update on sewer, on all the projects that we're talking about. So we're not trying to slip something.
That's incorrect.
Well, it's not incorrect.
You gave us a binder about two months ago about the sewer system, incorrect if I'm wrong. Nothing was in there about a dire need now, in the future it was. Now, we have lately, you give us a weekly update of projects, and I can do that. About a year ago, a year and a half ago, you started doing that, that's a good thing to do, to communicate. But nowhere in there does it say, "We're at the abyss, we're over the cliff, we have to get this done now." So again, I'm not trying to pass blame, I'm trying to get your questions answered, because that's what you're asking.
I think you are trying to pass blame.
No, I'm not.
But the bottom line, sir, is that every one of you, and myself and our staff, are quite aware of the sewer needs. That's why we've talked about what do we do with it? What do we do with it? We've all talked about selling it, but we've not really gotten any direction. And this has really kind of brought it to the forefront of what we need to do. We planned on coming here at mid-year to present these projects, but they have some lead time, and so that's what we're asking for, the lead time. We're not trying to point fingers at anybody, we're not, we've been working to keep everything going, but we feel like we're probably as far as we can go right now. And so we're asking for your cooperation in helping us solve this problem. It has nothing to do with us not informing the council about the needs of the sewer system.
Well, I think you're being disingenuous on that, because...
Of course you do.
The council has been made aware of a $25 million number for probably three years now. That we've known this $25 million of deferred maintenance has been out there. Six million dollars, sir, please, $6 million of it is now in, in terms of what we've heard tonight, critical, urgent. So the question is, are we going to continue to talk about that? Are we going to continue to allow a system that's running on borrowed time? Are we going to take action? Sometimes folks just don't want to make a decision, I understand that. But the question for us tonight is, are we going to take action on an issue that has been described as critical and urgent? It could have dire ramifications on our environment, and I don't think I'm speaking out of hyperbole here, Mr. Miller, I mean, this is a critical situation.
Well, before I was interrupted, just keeping Mr. Miller.
Mr. Miller, would you like to answer that? I know you go to the microphone to say something.
If I may.
Mr. Miller.
Mr. Miller.
Mr. Miller. Mr. McClinton, Mr. Miller.
I was speaking, and then all of you left, I believe. Take your time, Blake.
These are, these are critical, and these were, the majority of these units were brought forth in the budget years, in the current year that we're in. And that's, that's relevant. So we will, if this does not go through, we have, our wastewater system is in good standing with A M right now, we would like to keep that. If this does not go through, we will come back next meeting until we will keep raising our hand, state that these are needs.
To ensure and reiterate what you just said, this was a budget ask, and the current budget we approved.
Yes.
It was not approved in the original budget.
That's correct.
And money was allocated out of the bond. Very good. Mr. McClinton.
Yes, before I was interrupted by Mr. President, I'll say this, that to say that we know everything, as the Pearl Report said, that this council for years has been making decisions based on limited information, knowing one person that controls information, and that's your office. So when we ask questions, when we get shot down, or we get deflected, that's disingenuous to the people who elected all of us. So we will solve this problem. But at the same time, though, I think taking ownership and deflecting and saying that we've always known this, that is just not true, and it's incorrect.
Mr. Murphy.
So can we consider this, since there's a lot of discussion has to take place from anything related to the sewer system? So it could be a win-win. So based upon the model, there's a $10 million placed into the PAC currently. So since we know we're going to move forward down the road of conversations, could we adjust the reserve balance to make up the $7 right now until we have conversation down the road? Even if that conversation means the residual between the reserve and the expenses, so much money is allocated back to the, our reserve balance to make up for it over a period of time, at least to, I do agree with President Potem Posey, since it was a commitment, that we make sure we earmark that dollar of $17 million associated with that. And then we can have conversations in the future about the sewer and things that nature what we do. So could we, could we do that? Could that be your recommendation?
I believe this body could choose to do that, if that's what you would like to do. You would need to do that, because you would be, in a sense, violating your own fund balance policy by doing that. That's not for me to do, that would be for you to do.
Yeah, I'm asking, so for, in essence, a policy is made by a document of word, so when I talk about federal law, PAC doesn't, you just change policy temporarily. So could we make that adjustment or consideration for the next board meeting to put $7 million from that, just our policy, what we need to do temporarily, to make up the $17 million?
Right.
And then we could go back to our, and that way it's a win-win on both sides. That's something we can bring back and forth.
Are you saying to suspend the fund balance reserve policy temporarily?
To match the $17 million. Could we do that? Could we do that tonight?
If I recall correctly, the reserve policy was passed by resolution, and I think you would want to pass a resolution commending that.
Could we have a resolution for next council meeting?
Yes.
To do that? So that would be next council meeting, is what?
21st.
Whatever.
21st.
Okay. 21st.
Yes.
For that time. Can we consider that?
All right.
There's a vote up and down, there's a vote up and down, so that way we can consider passing this with 21st.
Oh, the next question.
If we just wait till the 21st, yeah, can we wait to put all three of these on the 21st, but still, it's a couple weeks to come back? Two weeks.
I think, I think this, all right, I think the biggest problem that we are dealing with is that there's some lead time involved in ordering this equipment. So if you wait two more weeks, and it's, you know, we'd like to get this in pipeline.
So the sunset for the bond is what?
I'm sorry.
The sunset for the bond is what to spend?
March 26th.
So we, I think we could, we could...
One of the risks would be that our recapture window is 18 months, and so we would need to go, I would need to go back to the drawing board and parse out all of our capital expenditures from '24 by date. And the number will change, I don't have any idea how much it will change by, but I would need to do that. So that will require some legwork.
For two weeks?
Yes.
Or two weeks later?
Yeah. It'd be more than two weeks, because by the time we approve it, and then by the time we allocate it, so, yes, so that, yes. I'm just saying the number on that allocation resident, or resolution would change.
You have to modify that for...
Yes, it would have to be modified, yes.
So we've got two options, I'll close, I don't want to, so we could either try to continue it or we, there's enough people vocally who've made a commitment, I'll speak to them, to modify the, to, being transparent, I would prefer to vote to modify on the 21st for the $17 million, $7 million that we don't reserve for the, to make it a whole for $17 million. So the question is, it's public, I mean, is that something we think we can get passed?
How do you plan on replacing that?
We don't need to talk about that, I mean...
Because I think it's the same, it's the same question as the mayor proposed. We can, we can come up with money, but where is it going to come from, right?
So reserve, I mean, we still have reserve? $69 million.
So you're proposing to put it back in the reserve?
We did find a way to put it back.
So we could take the same money from the general fund, which is what you were proposing earlier.
Or lower your reserve.
And as the mayor proposed, and finding a way in the next budget year to...
I think, I think the difference is probably just the timing and how much was going to go to the PAC designation.
Yeah, I think you're saying a good point earlier. If we're going to lower the reserve, there's going to be a lot of good idea projects coming at us. We're going to fund the sewer with a rainy day fund, or we're going to fund the sidewalk, or we're going to build a school, what are we going to do?
Well, I was just saying this, Mr. President, again, the $17 million, I can't use that as a point of reference. So either we're not going to do sewer, that's the point of reference. And from a, from a pet peeve, projects, I don't look at the sewer floating into the middle of Holland as anything of, I don't think much can compete, but those regulatory requirements and challenges that we will face, that we do not, and I've been in the order industry for 25 years now, I don't think we want those problems. So I think we make an argument, good point, I give you a second, I think a good point can be made for the sewer. I don't think there's going to be much argument for that.
Any other question?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. To kind of piggyback on Councilor Murphy's idea, so Ms. Corneille, I've told you this before, but with the reserve policy, as far as, yes, the council is the one who sets the reserve policy. The way that I operate as a council member is that I rely on city staff, the professionals in their field, and you as the CFO, to make recommendations on what's best moving forward in the city. And then based on your recommendations, I evaluate that and vote up or down. So the correct monetary number for the reserve policy, I think should come from your office, not from this council. As finance, I'm a school librarian. You're CFO. So what that correct term is, I think your office should provide a recommendation to council.
I would be happy to provide a recommendation.
Just speaking on my behalf, now, look, I think the typical city recommendation is three months. Hoover always strives to be better than your typical city. We've always led the way. I commend the six-month policy, it was, it was a strong policy, but six months may be too much, in my opinion. There are funds contained with that much of a reserve that could be going to benefit our citizens. So yes, we want to be more than three, but I don't know if we need to be at six. I personally think four and a half is a happy meeting. But as you mentioned, you know, instead of a, you take what we as a city now operate on per month, and you base the monetary number to that. If we go four and a half, if we go five, present a monetary number, and then every few years, as the city keeps growing, we may need to adjust that amount. And that will free up some funds. So for all you here, for drainage issues or other issues that form an art center, it's not an either or. We have the funds to maintain our infrastructure and to grow our arts in the city. It's just a matter of if we use them. So...
I can shortly provide a proposal to you at the next meeting, if that's what you'd like.
That's what I'm asking.
Work with Matt Adams.
And I'm going to speak for just a moment to Ms. Dukesme, because you've kind of spearheaded a lot of this, and I commend you for that. For those that don't know me, this is not going to mean anything. For those that do know me, I hope it counts for something. I was raised to honor God, to not lie, to not cheat, and not steal. I still hold to the count that a handshake is as good as a legal document. I'm only as good as my word. So tonight, I'm still proposing that we fund all this, because it is a lot of work, but I give you my word that we change, that I will vote to change the fund balance and put that money directly back into the performing arts center fund. And I will never touch that fund unless it's for the performing arts center. That's all.
Any other comments?
Mr. President, I think we can all agree that now that we've been made aware that there are critical needs for the sewer, that we don't really need to leave here tonight without addressing that. So I tend to agree with Councilor Middlebrook's position on that, that we need to go ahead and move forward tonight, but with a commitment that that's not the only important thing that we're talking about here tonight. So the sewer matters, complying with the IRS rules really matter, but also keeping our commitment to the PAC at the $17 million level, that matters, too. So even though we can't accomplish the full $17 million tonight with these resolutions the way that they are written, we can do that at the next meeting, which is April 21st, and I will also support taking the steps that we need to take with the reserve fund to make that happen. So I think that we can, we can accomplish all of these important goals by taking the steps that have been recommended to us, but with the caveat that we are going to take care of the $17 million and get that refunded immediately. I think another key piece here that we haven't talked about, that's very important to me as a person who deeply supports the arts and very much wants this quality of life item, it's not just good enough to stick $17 million in the bank and say, "Hey, this fund is here and it's protected." and say, hey, this fund is here and it's protected, we have got to have a strategy, and we don't have a strategy. And, and until we sit down as a team and we have a plan for not only what are we gonna do with seventeen million, but how are we gonna get all the way to the amount to have the, the type of center that this community deserves and that our performers deserve, then we're just kidding ourselves just by sticking the money in the bank, it's not gonna turn into a performing arts center by itself. So I, I wanna see us take steps and, Mr. Mayor, I wanna work with the staff, and I wanna work with the Arts Council and the Arts Foundation to make this happen, I think it's really important to our community. And we can do all of these things because we are financially sound and because the council that came before this council had the foresight to create the reserve fund, and, you know, sixty nine million dollars is an awful lot to be holding on to if taxpayers paid it money.
Any other comments, everybody?
Comments from the public? I'll remind folks that you're recognized for three minutes. And, uh, please get your name, and carry it at town, it'll be appreciated.
Happy winter to Scout Creek Drive. This to me is more about budgeting than anything, and hitting, I don't know, the act against stormwater or sanitary sewer or any of that is the only way to think about this. I heard you mention special interests. I can think of two special interests that happened in the last couple of years, right off the top of my head, that would have easily offset all of this. You got Riverwalk, and you got a building on Lorna Road, both of which were rammed through faster than I've ever seen anything in the City Council meeting. The mayor makes the budget, and that's where these things shall be accounted for over time. You can't say, we're not gonna spend anything or minimal money on sanitary sewer for years on end, and then say, well, you spend sixteen million dollars in one year, that's just not the way you do that. You, you know there's gonna be costs to operate this. And if you know there's problems, Mr. Mayor, then it should be in your budget that you propose every year. Million dollars, half a million dollars, whatever it takes. Less than three minutes.
Honorable Mayor, sir. Back in April of two thousand two, I was on the City Council. We had a vision then of a performing arts center. It was going to be in Ross Bridge. The land was there, we were going to have a fire station, we were gonna have another high school. Needless to say, here we are, twenty-three years later, no performing arts center, no high school, no fire station there. We'd passed all this on to the next council. Nothing was done. We had an architectural drawing, everything was done for a fifteen hundred seat performing arts center. A year and a half ago, those plans were given to Mayor Brokata. And still, nothing has been done about it. I don't understand this, I need someone to explain this to me. Why after twenty-three years, the City of Hoover does not have a, a performing arts center, we have to send our students who are graduating downtown at the Vowell Auditorium to have a Hoover High School graduation? Mayor Brokata, I'm coming back to you, because you were giving us plans a year and a half ago on the Performing Arts Center. I'm also coming back to Councilman Leiter, who, we had Bill Kadeish, who was giving us the land, he was gonna grade it, everything was going to be all set, all we had to do was build a building, until Mr. Leiter decided that Mr. Kadeish was a convicted felon and was never gonna do business in this city. But let me ask you something, Mr. Leiter, what do you do about President Trump, who was also a convicted felon? Do you tell him the same thing, he can't come into Hoover, we don't want him here, and I don't have to listen to you as my president because you're a convicted felon? We could have had all of this done, because Mr. Kadeish was giving us the land, he was gonna grade it, it was all set. And you decided he was a convicted felon, just like you decided you threw all this out, about this seventeen million dollars, right before you got on a plane to go to Rome, without consulting anyone on this council. Don't thank me, I'm not finished. I'm not finished. I'm not finished. Oh, no, I don't really care what you have to say. You are nothing to me, Mr. Leiter. Nick, you wanna throw me out? Everything is true, and you won't admit it.
Tracy Trudismus, thirty-four, thirty-seven Chapel Lane, Mayor, City Council, thank you for addressing this issue. Had a long history of, of what's gone on since, of course, two thousand two, in twenty-ten, Mayor Patelas was scouting, uh, locations. We know since then what all has gone on, that, um, we've just been made a lot of promises. And I know all of you, and I appreciate Christie, Casey, your comments, and I do believe you, but I think our arts community has been promised so much for so many years, that it hasn't come to fruition. And it needs to be more than a promise. And I'd like to know if there's more than two up here that would make sure that it's whole, and commit to a timeframe to make sure that it's whole. We understand that it has to come out from under the bond, you know, fund for the, you know, we have eleven months to go, we get that, but, um, you know, it just, between the athletics and the City of Hoover and the arts, it feels like the age-old story from high school of the, um, athletes bullying the band kid. Yeah, I'm here to speak up for the band kid, and the singers, and the actors, and the artists, and the performers, that, um, keep being pushed aside. So I would like to hear the consensus that it's more than, it's not the minority, that it's the majority, that you would back this to make sure we're whole, and we need to make sure, um, we would like to know what timeframe that is. If this PAC fund money wasn't there, what would you do? How would you fund the sewer? This just seems to be an easy, convenient thing to just go pick out, and then when it's in another fund later designated for the PAC, we wanna know it's not gonna be picked off then too. So I'm with you, I'm, I'm a arts council representative, I'm a local realtor in town, um, I commit to work with you on a strategy and a plan and a site, locations, and, um, there's a lot of people in our city that would like to join, and people that are here tonight, wanna be a part of it, we don't want you to make the decision on your own, we're here as an arts council, the arts foundation, the arts alliance, you've got people to help, and we, we wanna partner with you, but we just wanna make sure this goes forward. And a promise is just not enough. Thank you.
Hey, y'all. My name is Liz Lane, I am a professional visual artist, I have been for ten years, I am also running for Hoover City Council, and, uh, I am determined to see this PAC over the finish line. Um, I, I have up here with me two other artists in Hoover. Y'all, we need more art in Hoover, and I think that the seventeen million dollars is just a start for the arts in Hoover. We absolutely have room in this city, not just for a performing arts center, but we can be a home for visual artists as well, and I would love to see more investment in that from this city, we are large enough to do that, and I would like to get it over the finish line. I was diagnosed with dyslexia when I was seven years old, and I struggled to read and write, I about couldn't do it till fifth grade. The arts saved my life. If I had not had access to music, to choir, to painting, I don't know where I would be. And it breaks my heart to know that there are kids in our community that do not have adequate access to the arts. So I'll leave, I'll leave that with that, and I would like to introduce Jane Morgan and Amy Anderson.
My name is Jane Morgan, I'm an artist in Hoover, also went to Hoover High School, lived in Hoover for thirty-eight years. Many of y'all are my clients, um, but I would just like to say I, I volunteer a lot with, um, special needs children and adults, uh, children that are sick, um, and I do that in my personal studio, and I'd love to have a space, um, to do that and, you know, have others do that as well.
Hi, I'm Amy Anderson, I'm a visual artist here in Hoover, and I would just like to thank you guys for taking this issue seriously, we can tell that you are, and we appreciate that. I wanna just remind everyone that the arts are profitable, so once this is up and running, families here are going to support it, and it will eventually be a profitable thing. I used to run an art studio, a teaching studio next to Mr. V. Deli on, uh, Shades Crest Road, sorry, I'm nervous. And in two and a half years, I had nine hundred art class sign-ups. It was a profitable, you know, it's how we make our livelihood and our, our income, so I just wanted to say that the arts are profitable. Thank you.
Council. Mr. Mayor, my name is Michael Cunnell, and I live over near Lake Auburn, and I came with two pages of notes to fight for the PAC, and after listening to what I listened to at my first council meeting tonight, I don't think that's the question, whether or not we need the PAC, there's absolutely no question we need the PAC. I have friends who have, uh, kids in dance classes, there's so many dance classes around here, and guess where they're paying to go do their recitals? They're going to Sanford, they're going downtown to the BJCC, guess who's getting that money, it's not Hoover. Downtown, they're getting all the money. They're, they're also going to, uh, Oakmount High School, also not Hoover. We got nowhere for these kids to do this, and when they have to come on all these classes, it, it just makes the day, like, long. If you've ever been to a dance recital, they're long, and when you get a whole bunch of classes, it's really long. I have more arguments, but I really have a couple of questions, and one is just 'cause I just don't understand bonds. If we got the seventeen million dollar bond two years ago, I know if I walk into a bank and ask for a loan, they're gonna wanna know what it's for. So was that bond given specifically for the PAC? And if so, then if it has to be used in the next twelve months, then doing the sewer project and refilling that bucket, it still has to be spent within the next twelve months, am I correct? So what are we doing? And meanwhile, we've got places, we've got pieces of land that are disappearing, like, um, STV two, hundred twelve acres, we could have gotten a little piece of that, maybe, maybe, be a great place to put it over there. She mentioned, you know, the land over there by, uh, Ross Bridge, I mean, land is disappearing quickly, and if we don't lose money, then, um, I, I don't, I don't really understand how we have the money to use for other things, but we don't know to pay it back, or, or, however that works, but, um, I've got twenty seconds left, and I'd be happy to see it to her over there. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Barbara Williamson, I live, uh, in Blood Park, and I first came before y'all trying to save Artists on the Glove seven years ago. And for seven years, I think part of our concern about not having the full seventeen million earmarked, right now, and addressed as it has been recommended, is we have been promised. First, we were promised Artists on the Glove would be safe, it wasn't. Then we were told, you know, if somebody could get together and start something, we'll come help you. We did, and you didn't, so I think that's the concern, and, and we are talking a lot about children, but there are adults with needs. I was at Artists on the Glove, I had a studio there for six years, and I had three thousand paid classes come through, three thousand people come through, the majority were not children. I taught more, I felt called to teach the style of art that I teach, and those people were adults coming in, and they were people who had mental health issues and needed a placeholder once a week, there were people who had retired and didn't know what to do with their time, someplace for them to go once a week, people who'd lost spouses, been fired from jobs, all different changes in life, there's a lot that we go through, empty nesters. I mean, sometimes people, when they're transitioning, need someplace to go once a week, and that's where a community center like Artists on the Glove provided, I mean, that was just me, there were fourteen artists there teaching classes. So it was a lot of people coming through that building. I hosted a conference with people from five states who came in, I mean, there were things going on, there's, yes, the children do need places to have art, dance classes, stuff like that, but let's not forget the rest of the people out here, your mothers, your wives will be there at some point, some of you will be there, I have men and women in class, so let's, let's keep that in mind, and our concern is keeping the money together that has been hard fought to get, seeing it chucked off feels like you're making it a slush fund again. So thank you for thinking about that, and I'm with Mr. Duesmeus on, you know, can we get a commitment from you guys before we leave, that who will say yes, because we have been in this situation to have people say no. So thank you for your time.
Yes. I'm Larry Witschowski, I live in Southlake. And there are over four hundred and fifty homes in Southlake and eight hundred voters. We have been ignored by the city for way too long. And I'm very, very happy that Mr. Reeves tonight said that he wants to go from being reactive to proactive, because as far as Southlake residents go, they've been inactive. And I don't think this is a question of one or the other. I think the Performing Arts Center has merit, and I think getting rid of stormwater issues like this and sewer issues, we've had a number of sewer overflows in the Southlake area, which has gone into Valley Lake, which goes into the Cahaba River. Those things need to be controlled and fixed. So, really, I commend the City Council tonight for their ability to look beyond what the certain either or is, and to take a look at doing an and. Thank you.
We need to reset the three minutes.
We are, keep it up, our technology's a little sparse here.
My name is Gene Carey, and, uh, I live at twenty-one seventeen Southwind Circle. We purchased, uh, our lot in, uh, Southlake in nineteen ninety-two, three daughters and a wife, and, uh, in ninety-seven, we purchased an adjacent lot that is also, uh, on Indian Valley Lake. So I was glad to hear the Honorable Mayor speak tonight about the voice of citizens not, maybe not being heard, so I'm back again with my voice, uh, speaking directly to the City Council and these folks out here. Mr. Reeves spoke about the importance of the GSI, GIS, oh, excuse me, GIS drawings, and for those of you who are engineers, if civil engineers produce the drawings, their value should be followed or inspected. We've got, uh, two outlets, stormwater outlets, that are not in accordance... We've got two outlets, stormwater outlets, that are not in accordance with the GIS drawings. So what that has created in, not on my personal property, but on the city of Hoover's easement, sewer easement, there's a ditch. This ditch, you can see, is ten feet wide and six feet deep. All of the earth from the city of Hoover's easement is now in the lake or on my vacant property. That property used to be lake access is no longer lake access. So I've been damaged. There's problems of erosion that have been allowed to go on for many, many years. So it's incumbent upon the engineering department to inspect. I'll share again, I've shared this with the engineering department in the past, the GIS drawings were not followed. There's two stormwater outlets that are not shown on that GIS drawing. So we're scouring the land. We have sedimentation filling up the lake, but it's filled up the, the slough. So I'm damaged. That vacant lot is no longer lake access. So one of the other, a couple of other things. I received a letter from the city attorney stating that we cannot do work on private property. I'm not trying to get you to do work on private property. I'm trying to get you to do work on your city easement. That's where the problem's coming from. It's not starting on my property. So I also was refused a Freedom of Information request by the city clerk. So city council, I want you to be aware of what's going on if you're not informed. I'm making sure you know tonight. But there's been a state law passed, so I will be, I'll be making that request again.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Catherine Dorash. I live at forty-four ninety-one Tuckahoe in Rossbridge. And I have a little statement to read, but really, I want to thank y'all for taking the time to listen to the citizens. My husband and I actually chose to move to Hoover. Just about six months ago, we bought our house. It took about a year to find what we were looking for. We're retired empty nesters. The kids are long gone in Houston and South Korea right now, actually. But we're enjoying our time here. But there is something missing, and obviously y'all know what it is. It is a performing arts center, actually an arts center to encompass all the arts. Because performing arts are great, but it takes all of the arts to make things whole. I've lived in cities and towns such as some that you might have heard of, Collierville, Tennessee, Paulies Island, South Carolina, and Naples, Florida. And all of these cities are successful cities. They're viewed as successful cities. And all of them encourage and support the arts and have for years, decades, most of them. They realize that art is unique and its ability to honor the past and stand in the present and look to the future all at the same time. And I want y'all to be thinking about these things in the next few meetings, because y'all are getting ready to vote on whether or not to take the money from, I guess, the reserve fund and fund fully what you promised, the seventy million. And I hope that that passes unanimously. Because if it doesn't, it, it feels like Hoover is, is missing out on the future of the city. The arts bring people together. They are profitable, as you've been told by a couple of people that have had businesses and do have businesses in the arts. They encourage people to stay in your city. There are, there are studies on this. And I mentioned those three cities because you can look up different city council meetings where these studies have been discussed. Art includes people. It includes all people, which sports are wonderful, but they don't always include all people. And art's accessible to everybody. You don't have to have an ability just to enjoy it, just to sit and listen, just to watch. One thing art does is it challenges people too. And that is important because how do you know who you are, what you stand for, if you're not challenged by something sometimes? I just, I want y'all to stand up for something. And standing up for the arts is very important to a city. It's important to a city's future. It's important to a city's growth. And most importantly, it's important to all of the citizens. I'm a professional musician. I have been for a number of years. I've kind of retired from that and I volunteer now. But I just want y'all to know that it is important to every, every citizen in one way or another. And to remember that in your meetings these next couple of weeks before the next council, council meeting. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ashley Lovell, and I live on Shandlick Place. I would agree with you, sir, that this is not a sewer versus a performing arts issue. It's a sewer and a performing arts issue. And it's also a symptom of a much larger problem, which is leadership. This is about wasted funds on questionable development, i.e. Riverwalk, where we've committed to pay seventeen million dollars to Robert Simon, that of which we've already paid six million dollars. That's money right there that could be used. Elect officials that don't represent the people. This is a performing arts center that's been wanted for over twenty years. Okay, so there's that too. And it is short-term thinking versus long-term growth mindsets. It's vitally important to invest in our city's infrastructure as well as moving forward with a performing arts center. Both of these benefit Hoover for generations. My last question is to you, President Lyta. You mentioned, are we gonna keep talking about the sewer? Are we gonna take action? I have the same question about the Performing Arts Center. Are we gonna keep talking about it? Are we gonna take action?
Ken Clark, Inverness. Nothing against the arts, but I just want to talk about the sewer quickly. Okay, I was part of the group at Lake Heather where we had all the sewer overflows. And there's a few bullets up there. One of our worst ones was forty thousand gallons over a Christmas weekend. So if we go to the next page, you can see the lake there, Lake Heather. All those little orange circles with the numbers in them, highlighted yellow, are the sewer lift stations on the lake. The mayor and the engineering department have done an outstanding job helping fix these over the last few years. So if we scroll just a little bit down on the page, go back up, you can see only the red one exists. That's the only one left. So if we keep going here, we can see that we're talking about the BJ's Development, who spoke earlier tonight. For that project to come on board, Sewer Station Thirty-five is the remaining station for Inverness that has not been fixed. That's a nineteen seventy vintage lift station with no backup. And it takes all the wastewater from Winn-Dixie and Fresh Market area, all this. So when it overflows, it just dumps into the lake. But, and, and that's the last one that we were told when we were going for the BJ's Development, that that needed to be fixed. And Chris and, you know, Jason are sort of own that. There's about a million and a half to two million bucks, hopefully a million maybe, that would be required to fix that. So if you can flip one down, that's one of the lift stations on Lake Heather that was old. The city fixed that up. This is one here. Let's go down a little bit. That's raw sewage in the bottom left corner coming out of the lift station because it had failed dumping into the lake. So if we keep going, there's the sewage going into the golf course, eventually into the lake. Next picture. There's the, I guess we would call it toilet paper, running out into the lake. Next page. There's the lake. You can see the affluent from the sewer running out into the lake. That was about a forty thousand gallon spill. Now, the city did a great job. We met with the mayor and the group over a period of about eighteen months, and they took care of that. The only one left, if we keep going, is that one there. That's all that's there of Lift Station Thirty-five that would service BJ's. There's no emergency pump. There's no fence. If a squirrel eats the wires, that station goes down. And it's not in the best of shape. And keep going, the last slide. That's it running into the lake. So that's the last one. We met in February of twenty-three with, you know, with Chris and the guys in the county, in the, in the engineering department. And that's the last thing on the budget for the Inverness side. I can only speak for the Inverness side.
You didn't time that presentation better, right? I had three minutes.
Oh, right.
Perfect.
Robin Schultz in Blood Park. I wanted everybody else to speak so that we could go ahead and cover a timeline of this. Mr. Murphy said in the Hoover Sun story this morning regarding the Performing Arts Center, but sometimes things take a little bit of time. So let's wait that time for just a minute. On June fourth, twenty eighteen, which was almost seven years ago, the mayor proposed money for a Performing Arts Center. He said, we're actively pursuing approval of federal and state funds for the new interchange. The interchange at that time was only gonna be twenty-two million dollars. Now it's been up to sixty-one. Then he goes on and says, and then they talk, and I hear this just about every day, they, they're, the need for a Performing Arts Center, a community arts center in our city. We talk a lot about sports all the time. Fifty-eight percent of us, fifty-eight percent told us they want a facility for the performing arts. But we've been talking about arts, and we've been talking about sewer. So let's fast forward to June seventh, twenty twenty-one, where this body voted for a rate increase to do exactly what we're talking about right now, is to fix a sewer. You all voted for it. Not you, Mr. Ryan, but the, Mr. Shaw before you, okay? Voted to fix it. Where's the money? Where is the money that you voted for in a rate increase to fix this very problem that we're talking about right now? Back forward to March sixth, twenty-three. It's where you voted for the seventeen million dollar bond. Eleven twenty twenty-three, the Riverwalk Project. April first, twenty twenty-four. We had a place for the Performing Arts Center. And you continued it. You voted to continue. And there was an illegal second on that continuing. And it hasn't come back up yet. One year. These things take time. At some point, you've got to show some leadership and move forward and do something. You can't sit here and kick the can down the road. And that's all that's been happening. This item needs to be continued. And at the next meeting, you need to go ahead and pass and begin the process for the, for the, for the PAC Center. You said, Mr. Mayor, you can't build a PAC in twelve months. You can't build that interchange in twelve months either. But you've gone ahead and put the money in it, put the money in for the PAC. Thank you.
Ken King, Rossbridge Parkway. So I, I couldn't be more proud of the council's leadership standing up, making the case for why your word matters. Making the case for when you give your word on something, it should mean something. As I listened to everyone kind of vocalize, you know, what their position is, I also was listening for the opposing perspective. All right, I was hoping that, that I would hear, you know, well, I don't believe in trust. I don't believe my words should matter. I don't believe in, in, in pinning citizens against one another. I think it's a, it's a very basic political ploy, right? You turn folks against each other. You got the stormwater people versus the arts people. And then you make them fight each other over competing projects and limited resources. I, I think the more mature, responsible thing would have been simply to keep your word, simply to do what you said you're gonna do. And also obviously follow through and figure out ways to, to create a path forward. So one thing, I will say this. At the end of the day, I, I've watched the crow of report fiasco. I watched, I watched the, the Riverwalk Project, seventeen million, someone mentioned, fiasco. I've watched Ms. Thomas come up every week and talk about the burden of stormwater. We know it's a twenty-five million dollar burden. We know it's a lot more resources required to actually address it fully. It has not, fiasco. I've watched, you know, over and over again, the grocery tax debacle. Again, you, you plan on cutting taxes for folks in the grocery bill, but, you know, you, you fail to really anticipate how the law actually works. Debacle. And now I'm watching, the Performing Arts Center was the mayor asking champion. It was kind of his baby. Three months, like back in September, he was here asking for three million dollars for a plan. A plan to put this Performing Arts Center somewhere without, I mean, a plan to create one without a location, without, you know, it being fully funded, three million dollars. So again, fiasco. The one thing that I would say, if I had to point to one common thing, is leadership. At the end of the day, you know, you make a good point, Miss Driver, is like, what's the plan? Like, you guys for me with the plan for the PAC? Don't answer, don't answer. Reality of it is, you're not. There isn't a plan. It's been year after year of broken promises. This is not political. This is simply the truth. If there was a plan, you know what it is. It is another empty promise, just to get folks all stirred up, another political ploy, another dream, another pipe dream. And thank God that August, we have elections. And I'm so looking forward to the opportunity for new city attorney, possibly new mayor, possibly new, obviously new city council president. We need new leadership, new standing up, and real people right there by our people. Not once have I heard Ma'am Pecan say, I want to keep my word. Not once did I hear Councilman Lyta go, we did tell him this, didn't we?
Thank you, sir.
That's it, I got two more seconds, sir. I want to bring my two seconds back and end with, your word does mean something, sir. Thank you.
Very good. We have a motion and second for approval with resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Aye's have it, the motion carries. We'll now move to item number six, resolution number eight four three two dash two five.
This resolution amends the budget for this quarter year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. S M and Exhibit Eight to approve project funding for critical to the needs of the community arts and housing.
Motion to approve, resolution number eight four three three dash two five.
Second. I think this is resolution eight four three two dash two five.
The motion's to approve, resolution eight four three two two five.
Second. We have a motion, second for approval, no discussion, no question. Any comments from the audience? Sixty-nine, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Aye's have it, the motion carries. Item forty-seven, resolution number eight four three three dash two five. Of course.
This resolution approves the allocation of the proceeds of the city's twenty point three one.
Is president due for approval, resolution eight four three three dash two five?
Second. We have a motion, second for approval, comments, questions, or questions? Any comments? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Aye's have it, the motion carries. Brings us to several first readings tonight. Out of twenty-eight through thirty-five will be read tonight with no vote being taken. A vote, potential vote, will be considered in our next regular assembly meeting. Item number two five dash two six seven, we go.
This ordinance establishes seventeen voting places and one absentee voting place as listed in the specific one of the resolution for the municipal election scheduled to take place on the Fourth Tuesday in August, twenty twenty-five. Public hearing is set for April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Item thirty-nine, also for a first reading, ordinance number two five dash two six seven.
This ordinance provides for the levying of municipal taxes for the city of Hoover, Alabama, the assessment and collection of such taxes. Public hearing is scheduled for April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Item thirty, ordinance number two five dash two six six seven, eight.
This ordinance amends Appendix Four, Article Six, Division Four of the Municipal Code of Hoover, Alabama, and grants a non-exclusive franchise to MCI Metro Access Transmission Services, LLC doing business with Verizon Access Transmission Services. Public hearing is set for April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Item thirty-one, first reading, ordinance number two five dash two six seven.
This ordinance authorizes the transfer of real property of the city of Hoover, Alabama, to Shelby County, Alabama, for public purpose of the Valleydale Road Wideman Project, project number I M B S T P H, S T P B H seven one one two six oh two. Public hearing is set for April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Item thirty-two, first reading, ordinance number two five dash two six seven.
This ordinance authorizes the transfer of real property from the city of Hoover, Alabama, to Shelby County, Alabama, for the public purpose of the Valleydale Road Wideman Project, project number S T P E H nine eight oh two nine oh five. A public hearing is scheduled for April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Item thirty-three, resolution number eight four one one dash two five.
This resolution grants This resolution grants conditional use approval with the condition shown in the resolution for event party space to be established at the Center of River Chase Shopping Center for property located in nineteen sixty-four Montgomery Highway, Hoover, Alabama. A public hearing is scheduled for April twenty-first.
Item thirty-four, first reading, ordinance number two five dash two six six seven.
This is man's ordinance, number two six three, of the City of Hoover, Alabama, the recent property located at twenty-two O eight Chapel Road in E two, single-family estate district. Public hearing is scheduled for April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Finally, item thirty-five, ordinance number two five dash two six seven.
This ordinance amends Article Nine, supplemental regulation, section nine point oh eight, swimming pools of the zoning ordinance of the City of Hoover, Alabama. A public hearing is scheduled for April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Let's bring us to the end of our regular agenda. No further comments from the council.
Some questions, President, just a recap. May April twenty-first, our legal team prepare a resolution to modify the reserve in an effort to have seventeen million dollars associated with it. And also, General, from that, our CFO, not putting you on the spot for the twenty-first, I want you to have enough time to, you'll complete, you'll be ready for the first to, to give your opinion, to say your opinion. So both, both items will be on the agenda for the May of April twenty-first. And I, you have my name, I would support, and vote for. Any other comments? Any public comments?
Repairing, maintaining, and upgrading infrastructure should be part of the budget. Hoover should not be scrouching for money or funds to repair infrastructure like we see tonight. Chief Bentley plans years in advance to upgrade and replace essential equipment. Roads, sanitary sewers, and stormwater infrastructure are essential, and there are conveyances that must be the city's responsibility. There should be a plan to maintain and upgrade that infrastructure. Flood victims have been begging since October the sixth of twenty twenty-one for the city to have a plan. What you may not know is how much money the city spends annually on stormwater management that does not repair, maintain, or upgrade any infrastructure. Invoices produced by the city are incomplete, but you have a picture of some of the spending. The invoices fall into five categories. MS four support, continuous monitoring, IDDE, and post-construction inspections, special projects, and repairs. Nine monthly payments of varying amounts totaling exactly thirty thousand dollars provided a document on post-construction stormwater management in twenty nineteen. This is one of those special projects. The document is labeled MuniCode, but was not approved by the council, did not meet the requirements of the NPDES permit. We spent thirty thousand dollars to produce a five-page document that has been used in reports and avoid responsibility to help the city. There are at least sixty-seven missing items in the request for documents, but one year, this is a snapshot of some sort, a hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred dollars for MS four program support. So someone who helps write the reports that are needed. The Hoover Annual Report is very similar to the reports from Mobile, Montgomery, and Crackville. Recall the letter that I shared with you that was written November seventh, twenty twenty-four, from AGM to the mayor regarding identical problems in those four MS four annual reports. Another expenditure, thirty-five thousand dollars for IDDE and post-construction inspections. That was for only seven months in twenty twenty-four, thirty-five thousand dollars. Fifty inspections of outfalls annually are completed in two days, and in twenty twenty-four by one person, thirty-five thousand dollars. There are separate invoices for repairs, so the amounts that I have noted do not fix anything, no repairs. The broken infrastructure is still broken, flooding is still flooding properties, there's still polluting water bodies. And in twenty twenty-four, not only the amount that I've already stated, but Shoal was paid about a hundred thousand dollars for consulting as well. So at least three hundred thousand dollars in one year for stormwater consulting. The mayor's budget had three hundred thousand dollars for repairs, and there's still no long-term plan.
Any other comments tonight? See you tonight. Thank you for your attendance. Good journey.